Let's call this meeting order. Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome to the Mendon Board of Selectmen's January 3rd meeting. Could all please stand with us and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Start the meeting. Do we have any citizen's statements or petitions? Anybody who wants to be heard? Seeing no hands up. Either on Teams or not, we'll move on to, I don't believe we have any written correspondence. So we will take the next item in the agenda out of order, which is the swearing in of our new fire chief, Jason Bagma. And you should all give him a round, right? So I would invite our elected town clerk, Ellen Aggro, to please come up and swear him in.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete, and I know that they have a little celebration planned for you, so.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Congratulations, thanks.
Perfect. Watching me? Oh, good. Somebody better.
John Dudley on there or leave this?
It's here, some person.
He was in the.
John, where's your crew?
Sit.
Come sit right at the table.
Sure.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you. There's power right down there if you need it.
Yeah.
You've got Wi-Fi here if you need it.
I would please. Is there enough? I can, okay, thank you.
Welcome, John. Thanks for coming back to talk to us about the management study.
Saving study, saving management study. So with that, I'll want to introduce these folks.
We have, this is the, in Daria and Rick Stenson from Beta Group. They are the ones that facilitated payment management study that took place and they have a presentation for you guys to show you the information that was collected.
And just quickly first, thank you for having us and we're glad to show this to you. Peter has done pretty much all the work on this. He's been doing this for 13 plus years. Strong background in that. I'm a retired public works director from Wakefield, so I retired in 19 and got bored pretty quickly. And so now I help them out. So with that, I'll let Peter run you through it so we don't take up too much of your time.
Yeah, thank you. As you said, thank you for having us and thank you for the opportunity. So I've got about a 15 minute presentation here. We're just kind of talking about the overall program itself, kind of the findings of the program. Open up for any Q and A at the end. So just to start off, just some of the benefits of implementing a pavement management program. So why implement a pavement management program in a community? For one, it protects communities' investment by maximizing lifespan of the road network. It provides the ability to plan ahead and predict budgetary needs. Very important. It's a tool that you can use to apply the appropriate road treatment at the correct location and time. And really, it's a resource that helps provide the foundation for decision making when putting together your roadway capital improvement plans. So some of the program goals and objectives of the program. So first and foremost, it is to conduct that pavement condition assessment to understand your baseline roadway conditions in the community. So understanding your road conditions and needs, evaluating repair strategies and the benefits of those. We use this data to establish an estimated backlog of improvements to understand where the town currently sits with its pavement management network. And all this information, again, at the end of the day, it uses a resource to help develop that prioritized capital improvement plan. So we see pavement management as a five step approach. So first and foremost, step one would be to establish your GIS based system. Develop your database. We use GIS, geographic information systems as a tool to use a conjunction with this program. So in addition to having your tabular reports, spreadsheets, data, the GIS environment gives you that mapping element as well to use to assist to, again, use for your decision making. So step two is then to actually conduct the roadway assessment program. So these assessments were conducted in this past summer, 2023. Once the roads have been scanned, the data is post-processed. We do data analysis, forecast modeling, and produce our deliverables as part of this project. Once the rules are made to the town, step four then be, again, now you use that data moving forward for prioritization, capital planning efforts. And then step five might be the most important step is maintaining that system, updating road improvements annually, keeping the system current. Towns making investment in the program. It feels really important to keep that up to date, keep up with it year to year. So again, just to reiterate, we do, you know, it's a GIS centric approach we use to do this, to develop this pavement manager program. So we use ArcGIS online. So at the end of the day, the town has an ArcGIS online platform that allows access to all of the data, imagery collected as part of the assessment. Reports are, you know, we do hard copied liberals as well, but we do provide an interactive GIS platform that town can use to assist in future planning.
Can I ask, are you, are we able to amend that or export that to use for like planning with land surveys?
Yep, it's all.
Types of maps?
Yep, it's all, you can export the data out in a GIS environment or you can export it out in tabular format, spreadsheets.
There might be other committees that might want to use that data at some point.
That's up to how you, but yeah, the data can be fully explored.
Yeah, great.
So the assessments themselves, they were conducted using LiDAR technology. So we've recently partnered with a firm called Civil AI out of, they're out of the Boston area. They developed this LiDAR scanner. You can kind of see it on the bottom of the right fixture here on top of the vehicle. So what the scanner does is does a full 360 scan of the roads as you drive each road. That scanner is detecting distresses in the road, so potholes, patching, alligator cracking, linear cracks. And what it does, puts that data into a point cloud. And from there, the point cloud, at the end of the day, that data AI technologies run on that, on that point cloud. And industry standard zero to 100 scores are established for each road segment in the town. So 100 would be essentially a brand new road and zero would be bottom of the curve.
That's a single pass or?
It is a single pass. Yep, yep. And I should mention, in addition, so imagery is captured as part of the drive. So you have forward facing imagery that's captured for a smartphone device mounted on the windshield. We also have a 360 camera up top with the LiDAR scanner. So as part of the deliverable, you get two forms of imagery. You get the forward facing and then you also get 360 imagery as well, so.
And that's alongside the map data. So like you can just address it, see the imagery as well as the data.
Yeah, yeah.
Same location.
Yeah, I'm going to pull up slide players kind of.
I'll let you go.
Yeah, no problem. But yeah, the imagery is dropped every 10 to 20 foot intervals. So you wind up with thousands and thousands of imagery within the Arcius line platform. One of the big benefits of doing LiDAR technology is it produces repeatable, consistent data. It's not, you know, it's not a manual interpretation. If I go out and inspect the road, if you go out and inspect the road, you know, we may see the road differently. You know, the LiDAR is actually detecting the distresses in the road and calling up the scores to the AI technology. And then once again, the inspections were completed in the summer of 2023. So once the data is collected, we're able to analyze it. We have data at three different levels. So the roads are essentially, first and foremost, are scored at 20 foot intervals. And so some of the benefits of this is you're able to pull out isolated instances of possible road issues at those smaller finite intervals. So for example, if you have a road that's in good condition, but maybe it has one or two areas that come up with low scores, that might be, those might be instances where the TPW can go out internally and, you know, might be an isolated pothole or drainage issue that can be rectified internally. So we have that finite level of data with the imagery. So then what we do is we analyze the data at a little bit larger scale. So we do a block to block assessment. So as you can see here, with the example, Main Street, you know, if there's a Main Street, it would be the first intersecting street would be section one. And then the next intersecting road would be section two and so on throughout the whole course of the road. So certain roads could, you know, your longer roads could have 10 to 20 segments within that get a score. And then finally, we'll do an overall composite rating as well. So you can look at every single road end to end and see what the composite score was on that road. So again, three levels of analysis.
There's just different layers in the GIS?
If you can turn on it up. Yes, yep. So your road profile, so what was inspected in towns? The town has 56.28 miles of town accepted road. That's paved. So those are the roads that were included in the assessment. We did not inspect any town unaccepted private or state roads as part of this project. So once the data comes back to us, we group it into five high level categories. So you can see here on the left, so no maintenance required, routine maintenance, preventative maintenance, minor rehab, major rehab. Those are the five high level categories we use. So no maintenance required, roads essentially are in excellent condition. At this time, we're saying no real means, you know, nothing really needs to be done to the road, but they should be monitored at least annually, especially following the winter season, just to make sure those roads are still, you know, in that excellent condition. Routine maintenance would be roads we consider as good roads. They may be in need of some minor maintenance. Examples of treatments that could fall under that category would be crack sealing and fog sealing. The third category would be preventative maintenance. So these are roads that are structurally in good condition, but the surface, they may be seeing deterioration. Roads essentially are in fair condition. So maybe a surface level type of improvement could be necessary at this time. Chip seals, microservices, thin overlays are the type of things that we see for roads in this category, I would recommend. Oh, excuse me. So the fourth grouping would be minor rehab. Roads are in poor condition. Mill and overlay, shim and overlay are typical treatments you would see for candidates of roads in this, in this category. And finally, major rehab would be roads, you know, in very poor condition. That would be, you know, we recommend sort of some sort of full depth of improvement to address through the stage of life.
Do you have anything above major? Sort of like emergent?
We, we do group, I'll get into like the ranges in a second. So we do zero to 50. It's kind of that major category. I have had towns in the past, like they've broken out like say like 20 to zero. And those would be like, they'd come out, pop out like, you know, we could classify as very poor.
Okay.
However, you'd want to classify it, but we can, we can really, we're very flexible, the program. So we'll customize the banding.
More of a like, hey, what do we tackle first then? One of our roads just collapsed and how would we figure that out before it happens next time?
So that would be information that would be, we do like a worst first report and so that would be, we should certainly pull out of that. I just wanted to give a couple of examples of imagery, just so you can kind of get an idea of putting what you see in the field to the score. So this is the Applewood Lane, it's pretty fairly new road. The rating on this road is a 99. So this would fall in a maintenance required category this time. We've got an example here, Rust Haven Road. The score would be 72. You can see this road, you know, it's considered to be in fair condition. The road's been crack sealed. Those just distresses, even though it's been cracked, so those distresses are still present in the road. But this could be a good candidate for some sort of preservation before that road degrades further down to say the minor major rehab category, it becomes more costly to improve. And then finally, an example of a road in the major category, certainly can see all the distresses present in the road. The heavy alligator cracking on the right side. This road scored in the low twenties. So to get into, again, data is collected. So just to kind of summarize our findings of the study itself. So again, we have those five major categories. So next, so you can see the RSR range that we have. So zero to 50 would be roads in that very poor category. Minor would be RSR range 50 to 65, 65 to 80 is the preventative band, 80 to 92 is the routine band. And finally, 90 to 100 is your excellent or momentous part band. So overall, the, just to kind of get a quick breakdown of the major rehab band. We found roughly 8.35 miles to find, fell into that category, which is roughly 15% of the road network with an estimated planning cost of 5.8 million to take those rows up to a score of 100. The minor rehab band would be RSR range 50 to 65, utilizing $18 per unit cost for this band. Roughly just under 10 miles fell into this category, about 17% of the network and about 2.7 million again to take these roads. And if you were to address these roads all at once, it would be essentially 2.7 to get those all to 101 shot. Preventative maintenance would be RSR range 65 to 80. Roughly 25% of the network fell into that category for an estimated planning cost at 1.8 million. And then roads in the routine maintenance, 80 to 92, about a third of the network fell into this category. So just over 18 miles and estimated cost of 250. And finally, 92 to 100 would be your, your defer maintenance category. About six miles fell into that category for about 11% of the network. So overall, when you sum that, your estimated.
I'm just kind of curious, as I look at these, if no, nothing, we're, nothing we're done, is there a a formula approach that you use to understand how quickly roads degrade based on traffic? So when you think about forecasting, if I'm looking at preventative maintenance.
Yep.
Even the score, can we actually forecast?
Yep.
Quickly go from preventive to minor rehabilitation to major?
Yeah, we have, we have models we run on the backend. So it follows the pavement deterioration curve. And so as roads approach, you know, as they become, as they get into that fair category, they start to accelerate into degrade at a much quicker rate. So we do run like models based on that. And I'll get into it a little bit. I have a forecast model slide I'll show. But yes, that is an exercise we can do. We could do it, you know, we do it in Excel or we can do it through our program. So we can, we can pull the data out and model however, you know, we, again, we start with a pavement deterioration curve to do that, but we can tweak it as well.
How much can we do, like, how much can we do the Mendon Highway Department? Like, can we do up to minor rehab? Or are we somewhere in the middle of minor rehab? Or can we go to major?
Most of this is contracted out.
Okay.
Crack ceiling, the overlays, the microseals, all those are contracted out. So we're like pothole repair and maybe if we, we do have something down, we're going to do a little bit of crack sealing. But they come in with the trucks and they're done. Do a whole road in two hours. There is.
Okay.
We don't have that ability.
I did one, so when we total that and average together, the average score came in 70.23. So we do a weighted average. It's weighted by square yard. So roads that are wider, longer, carry more weight than your narrower, shorter cul-de-sac roads. So especially where there's more paved area, those, you know, we're, we're weighting and buy them out of pavement on each road. The average square we see in New England, I'd say over the last five years, we've done roughly, roughly 100 of these and 100 of these. We see the average to be somewhere like 72, 73. But we see that range, you know, as low, we've seen as low as the 50s and as high as, you know, the high 80s. So, you know, being a 70, you're probably just slightly below average. But, you know, you're certainly not at the bottom of what we've seen. Just want to show an example here of the GIS maps we can put together. So this just looks at the data in GIS environment. The blues on the, on the map indicate roads, you know, in, in better condition, the no maintenance required is dark blue, the light blue would be the routine maintenance. Green is the preservation, preventative maintenance band. And then your oranges and reds would be your roads in the poor and very poor conditions. I just did a screen, a couple of screenshots from our Arcius line platform. So some of the JS map we just showed, in the middle of this, you know, you have the ability to zoom in on this map, select road segments, open the photographs, which I'll show on the next slide. There's widgets around the outside of the platform that interact with the data as you select it. The same thing on the bottom with the tables, you're able to do selection sets. So you get playing level estimates for your program. And then on the right side here, we track the paving improvements over time. So right now, we've, we've loaded in paving program, paving improvements back to 2016. So we have, it looks like seven years of history that we've loaded into the program. So just, just kind of explain a little more on the imagery that we collected. So as you zoom in, you can see, it may be hard to see, but these gray circles pop up. They're set with a zoom extent. So as you zoom in, you're able to click on the photographs and the photos pop up within the interface. So we have two layers, one for the forward facing imagery and then a second for the 360 imagery as well. And then finally, just to talk a little more about the roadway improvement tracking. So again, we've, we've logged in roughly seven years of improvements. So again, the idea is, you know, in 2024, we'll want to load the improvements in. And these are layers that we can turn on and off, you know, over, you know, as we move on in time, that you can track your road improvements by, by year, we can track them by treatment. We can track costs. So we can, all information we can load into the program. Just doing a little five of your outlook here, roughly 15 miles have been, have been addressed in the last five years, so about a quarter of the network. So I want to just kind of display a forecast model we ran. So this is our balanced approach. So what we did was we assumed 40% of, you know, if your improvements go into minor rehab, 15% go into major rehab, 15% go into the routine and 30% go into preventative. So certainly, these are percentages we can tweak. But this is just kind of our starting balanced model that we ran, just so that you could get an understanding of, you know, certain funding allotments. We would recommend, we'll say, maintain or improve the, the RSR. So currently, the chapter 90 allotment that the state provides the town is $275,000. So using this kind of current scenario and the current, you know, pricing we're using in the model, which I will mention, it's a, we do run a very conservative model. And we do that just because of recent inflation spikes that we've seen here in recent years.
Conservative against which attributes? Which attributes are you being conservative with?
Just our unit pricing. So the.
The cost of the payment.
Yeah, so we, we run a unit price per square yard. And we're, we're definitely running conservative numbers on that just because, you know.
Do you assume in these models that you're going to be coming back to do another LiDAR scan on some regular basis? Like, how is the model assuming that data is not drifting?
So we, yeah, so we would recommend, and I was gonna say that on my last slide, we recommend doing a scan every three to four years because at year three or four, the data really becomes obsolete. You know, you, in the imagery as well. A lot of it goes into, you know, how harsh of a winter you have, you know, if you have a really harsh winter, you know, the roads can, you know, we can try to predict, predict the deterioration as much as we want. But, you know, predictive deterioration versus actual deterioration are two different things. So that's why we recommend in that three to four year window, you do a re-scan just to see, you know, where you are at that time. I do still.
Six costs that we could plan for. That's why, I assume that's why you gave it for the last slide, right?
Yeah. Yeah. But I was, what I was getting to with the unit pricing in the model, we do, we run very conservative numbers. We talked, we worked with our vendors, a lot of vendors in the industry a lot to understand how much does a millon paid cost? How much does a reclamation cost? And we try to run the concern on the high end of that. Because we don't know where the numbers are going to go in the future. So if you run a very conservative inflation adjustment year to year. So that way, you know, we don't come, you know, we don't, we don't underestimate. So with this model, we ran, you know, again, accounting for 5% inflation year to year. Again, using higher unit pricing, the recommendation is 700,000 annually into your roads to keep that 70 rating consistent. If you're looking to gain ground on that, you know, I would do 700,000 kind of as your, your kind of benchmark.
There's a lot of different funding sources, as you probably know for that. It could be, whether it be a tip project, could take a big part of that with a big project. There's also fair share money which just came out. And so there's different ways to. And, uh, so there, there's different ways to grab money with a, there's a lot of different state programs. Complete streets that might take care of part of it. Um, so there are other funding sources besides just chapter.
The other thing too was like, you know, we're, we're, we're including, you know, major rehab in here at fifteen percent. You know, if that was something, if you were to do full depth reconstruction. If you want to do more of like a perfect preventative-based plan. You know, more chip seals, things of that nature. You could get more miles covered with less, um, same amount of money. So you can see, you know, it doesn't take as much than to.
Worse roads. Much worse.
But this is just an example. I just wanted to show an example of a model we run. Um, we can run different types of models. We do do like preservation-focused models. We do like worst-first models. So if you weren't gonna do any preventative maintenance, and if you're just gonna do major or minor rehab, you would see it take even more to keep that. Score level. I just wanted to wrap up with a couple slides. So, um, capital planning and prioritization. And so when developing the capital plan, um, you know, we recommend considering multiple factors. It's more than just the road condition itself. It's considering factors such as functional classification, materials, collectors versus locals and cul-de-sacs. Repair costs, um, life improvement of, of each road treatment. Um, and then your subsurface utilities, if you have any, those are your ones, things you'd want to consider as well. Sidewalks and curb ramps, if you're going in to improve. Yes, subdivision or such, you know, if those sidewalks and curbs need to be addressed as well. Those are factors we'd want to consider when developing the plan. Uh, and then finally, I mentioned geographic implications as well, too. Um, we, we highly recommend grouping projects together when you're putting your plans together. This helps cut down on mobilization fees. Of moving equipment around town and, um, you know, if you're doing a multi-year capital plan, three to five-year plan, you know, we recommend, you know, spreading the wealth around the town.
When I went to the MMA conference last year, I, I sit in, uh, on a, uh, presentation about. Roads and roads and, and one of the issues they talked about was when you, you spoke about here, subsurface utilities, gas, water, sewer. And actually several of the towns changed some of their zoning bylaws. To, um, alter what they require utilities to do. And they actually do work on the roads, including. One of them, they said, rather than just patching. Resurfacing an entire road in an area when they do that. And, you know, my, my question is, I mean, that sounds terrific to actually get the utility to pay you to maintain your roads. Because clearly, if a lot of construction goes on, it doesn't take long before the integrity of the roads destroyed, right?
I can tell you that, um, and I know. In Melrose, they use National Grid, uh, that does their. And Eversource that takes care of their gas and electric. They have a, um, good working relationship with them. They've built. But they came up with a program where, depending on who was doing what. If National Grid was gonna go in and, uh, and they, and put a gas making, if they did it before. Uh, the road needed to be paved, then they would have to pave it curb to curb. And sometimes they would give the money to the city. Sometimes they would do it themselves. If they, um, if the city had plans to pave that road. Then National Grid would go in and do their work and the city would pave it under chapter ninety. So they worked closely with them and they kind of had a, a good mix and other communities have done the same.
So my, my question is, does your organization, your company get involved in helping us with those? Over, overreaching issues of actually setting those policies when we deal with the utilities?
I don't know if we have, but I'm sure we could and sit down and, and help you out with that. I don't think that would be an issue. Yeah. So a lot of communities are doing different things to accomplish that. Some will put, I don't know, do you have a moratorium? Now, if you pave a road, they can't touch it for so many years.
Well, that was one of the. I don't know what, I don't know if we have any, any coherent policies about that at this point.
Most towns will have a moratorium. Some will be very inflexible with it. My policy that I had in Wakefield was that. If you wanna open up the street. That's fine after we just paved it, but you're gonna pave curb to curb. Um, and I'll let you do it. But we really want you to do it ahead of time. If it's a, cause you have residents, all of a sudden their furnace goes and they're putting in a new heating system. And instead of having, uh, say electric, they're gonna put in gas. Well, now they're gonna dig the street to run the line in. So we would have a, a fee that they would. Pay the town that went into it and counts, so we could maintain that in the future. So a lot of different things you can do with that.
Does this analysis include stormwater management in relationship to the road at all, or it's just?
It doesn't, but I mean, that's certainly another, like, we could, if you had data like that, we could tie it in, but we don't.
Doesn't just do this. They have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, you can tie in.
I'll store that little nugget.
All of the, you could tie in all of the utilities so you see that pop up and stuff.
This is like studies kind of focused just on.
We don't have much going on here but stormwater and. And, and roads. Everything else is in the air.
In the initial meeting that presented at, you talked, this is actually extensible. So you can expand this to signage, trees.
Yeah, the LiDAR can pull out, um, like.
So you're doing object detection and we're tying just one classification.
I've even been thinking, uh, some of what you did, you know, the. Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council Reconstruction Team. You know, could use some of those scans, I'm sure, when they, you know, when they do their analysis. Because that's what we do with a, with a scanner is to. Put it out and, and, and use it to, to scan the roadway. If you've already gotten that in the three-day scan with a point cloud. That can be imported into use.
Yeah, and the, the nice thing with the, having the point cloud is, as, as, um, I'll say, new algorithms are developed over time, you have that point cloud established, you can. You know, once algorithms level up, you can pull the data out. So. As a science, so they have a science algorithm that's already in place. I know they're working on line striping next. Like being able to catch, uh, grates, like manhole covers. I know that's kind of in the works moving forward.
That's a big thing is getting them to. Write all of the code that's gonna extract that. So, um, as they get it, then it becomes available. But the data is already collected. So you don't have to go back out and do that.
Again, it would be off of data that you scanned twenty twenty-three.
Four years from now, you would be trending from that data. You'd be able to make those comparisons.
I would, I mean, in four years, I would recommend re-scanning so you get like an updated.
Uh, you know, it'd be nice to see changes in our roadways.
You wouldn't lose the original.
Yeah, that's all.
A comparison, but an anomaly detection over a long period of times.
What we, when we do re-scans, what we do is we take the original data and we take the new data and we line it up and we look for, we read fly, we're afraid of red flags, like, you know. Anything that says drop more than ten points.
This road's decomposing way quickly.
You'd also be able to compare where work was done and see what current. Efficiency of the work being done.
So if we knew, if we knew, yeah, if we knew a road is paved in twenty twenty-five, we did a scan in twenty twenty-six and that road came in at an eighty-five, we know what's going on here because.
So you have all the data now. And you gave us, based, that, that, that forecast you showed us is just baseline. This is sort of based on, if you want to get to this level of roadwork, this is what it costs. And I'm assuming we can run for many very, throw a lot of scenarios at you now. So if we want to see what preventive looks like, a hundred percent of allocation. If we have a fixed dollar amount, you'd come back with a recommendation of where you would apply that, those dollars.
And if you, there's a, uh. Repair method on there that you don't, we don't want micro-surfacing or we don't want.
I'll defer. I don't know what that is.
You can turn around and say, we don't want to have that and we can take that out of the whole mix. So then you get a more realistic.
And it's from a planning pers- I mean, honestly, I think we're probably gonna have this dollar amount that we're gonna allocate. And we probably want to start looking at what is the most effective way of spending those dollars, biggest bang for the buck. And that's be something you can help us with. What if we wanted to switch to all cobblestone?
The other thing you can do. The other thing you can do is that when you look at, especially a long road. You might have this end of the road is ninety, this end of the road is ninety, and you got this section in between that's a thirty. Well, we can do a spot repair program, not like little stuff, but a big. Two hundred, three hundred foot section, and you could put a contract together to just do that. Cause obviously that. Those nineties are being dragged down by that in-between piece, so. And you can, you know, then focus on that if you wanted to. So if, and, and just do that middle section or.
So it feels like we're at a point now, we start to do a dig, a deep dive on the data. It's a part of the planning process. Cause this is, this is, this book is gonna show us very high-level. Assessments, but not as actionable as it could be. Fair?
And so that's the next phase where, you know, yeah, again, the book is really, it's really high level, but when you do the capital plan, it's where you gotta kind of, you know. Again, the G I S, the data, the modeling, it's kind of a combination of all three and, you know, putting together a plan.
And Jonathan will get on his computer that. Plus a map for the wall, but he'll get. Dash, he'll get that dashboard. So he'll have that and he can slip, go and stop.
He had his own data? Customer complaints in there?
I mean, anything in it. So anything in a G I S format, you can put up there. So, I mean, like I said, if you ever, if you, in the future, if you want to pull out. Signs or something like that, it is data you can just simply upload to.
I could see a lot of future.
Is the forecasting and planning, uh, module, is that something from, you know, someone like myself? If I had it in front of me, would I, is it user-friendly or is that something we really looking for consultant?
I could do, uh, you know, I could do a quick how-to with you on it. It's all in Excel. So, um, we could do a, you know, we could walk you through it.
Not that I want to, I'm just, the capital planning committee might need to do.
My, my thought is that you would work with, with the highway surveyor to come up with this plan and then. He would come to the capital plan, the finances of to us with what, you know, what, what needs to be done, what, what's the best balance to strike. But maintenance versus severe repairs.
It is a balancing act because, you know, you can't just, obviously. When you go to more preventative approach, you're getting more miles done, but can't neglect, that's right, bottom of the curve, so.
I've only met one community. And it's a friend of mine in New York. He has twenty-five miles of road and he's paving five miles a year. And I've never, it's so in, five years he'll be all done. And then he'll just wait to start over. I've never met anyone that can, uh, call any community that can accomplish that.
But, but you can, I mean. When you look at something like this, you can carve out major rehabilitation in terms of a debt obligation as for, for a project. Which is what, but that's why we want to look at the different scenarios to understand what would preventive cost us. How much can our, you know, chapter ninety, average chapter ninety of the last ten years that we've received? What in realistically can we maintain if we take a preventative approach? And what does that leave us in terms of major rehabilitation? These are all scenarios that need to be looked at. Before putting a plan.
Is there a way to, to, to tell us, is there a, uh, an average life expectancy or it must change based on the?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, we have like, each treatment has a, like, an average life expectancy. So like your, your reconstructions, reclamation, generally, that's like. Twenty to twenty-five years is what you'd expect out of that.
But then you have to do a maintenance on that, preventative maintenance.
You want, yes. So if you do a maintenance on, say, say you reconstruct a road, you ideally would wanna do some sort of maintenance within. Three to five years, like a fog seal or crack ceiling on it, cause that extends the life of the road three to four years. And then at year seven or eight, you'd wanna do some sort of. Uh, surface treatment on that road. Again, that adds another seven, eight years of life. So, you know, lower cost treatments extend the life of the road.
It ties to the pavement deterioration curve you're referring to, right? So we can extend that curve if we're doing some of those maintenance.
So instead of then having to go in and rebuilding the road in twenty years, you know, if the road can last thirty to forty years and you're.
Forecasts and the plan could be fairly intensive when you think about that.
Yeah, it depends on, yeah, depending on the level you want to get into. Yeah, especially if you're going with a very aggressive preventative plan.
But you have enough data now that you could do that if we.
I think it's really just thinking about what are the questions we're asking, what are the different approaches we'd consider? And what are our funding sources that are available to us to help frame what the options would be, is my guess.
I think the biggest, biggest thing is based on the data you have to come up with the most cost-effective solution. Or balance of maintenance versus reconstruction. Cause there're gonna be things that are so bad, they have to be done right away versus other things that are just maintained. And what that cost is and how to pay for it.
And we did a, uh, and we can probably grab the article and send it to you, but Newbury Port. We put that whole capital plan together. They went for bonding and recently they just, was it a grant they thought? Roadway stuff, so can send you that so you have an idea of what you can utilize.
Question I would have, the one piece of data I don't think I saw, I'm wondering, is, is, is traffic studies? Cause to me, I mean, to your point, Mike, if, if it's, it needs major rehabilitation, but three cars a day use it. That would lower the priority of that road in my mind, right? So do you, did you, do you have traffic studies or can we?
So we use the cost benefit value for that. So what, we don't have actual traffic data, but we use, based on the functional class of the road. That's how we do our. We assume, so like in our principal material, we assume ten thousand traffic, uh, vehicle trips per day, uh, minor materials five thousand. And then, so what we do is we, we use that data so that your cost benefit value analysis. Those major roads are gonna carry a higher CBV score, um, because it's gonna, cause those were saying.
Has some of that, that you could extrapolate based on the residences and.
And you can, you can use actual data, right? If we get it.
Yeah, yeah, if we had.
On a particular roadway. And you, you can incorporate it.
Absolutely, yeah. If we had traffic counts, we can put that.
Curious, John, and talk to the planning board, talk to Chief Kersey. Yeah, I know we've just done some traffic studies just for Providence for the senior center study. Through North Ave.
Yeah, if you have those numbers, we can put it down and then.
And I'm sure the planning board has been doing traffic studies based on their, the work they do, right? Different developments, so we will be able to get some information over to you.
Yeah, that just makes your cost benefit, you know, more, more accurate if you have actual counts rather than us, you know, using some.
Anecdotal, you know, based on Chief Kersey and his team could probably look at saying, based on our anecdotal observations, we know that. Heavy, high, medium, low in terms of traffic and high being a range of X number of vehicles per day. Would that be helpful to? Well, John, your, your recent contact with the engineer from DOT. They have it from the roads of the tributaries that lead to, to the highways. So I think they probably have an offer of that data that you could feed into that.
Yeah, well, there it is. It's cool stuff.
It's good. I'll just wrap up my last slide. I don't kind of touched on most of this already, but, uh, just the system maintenance of the program again. You know, updating the data as improvements are completed. So generally, we recommend updating the system at least once per year. So, you know, if you're doing a spring and a fall program, maybe you want to do it twice per year. But certainly updating that, you know, that the program as you complete, you know, once you finish your construction season. See where that network score is, you know, is it going up, has it gone down, is it maintaining? And again, we're, we're balancing that against predicted deterioration to see again, you know, how that score is trending over time. Monitoring and updating your actual costs. Um, so we want to look at the, your, your pricing with contractors and year to year. You know, is it, are the prices going up? Are they going down? You know, they're maintaining, you know, if the prices are maintaining, then we'll leave the pricing as it is, is, but. We want to get accurate, as accurate of, you know, unit pricing in the program as you can, because that, you know, our modeling and our estimated pro- planning numbers. It's all based on those unit prices. Again, we talked about, you know, the important, you know, we recommend that three to four year, doing that reassessment. Get a new kind of baseline of the data. Then if you have actual data, you can compare the actual data from three years prior and, or four years prior and then, you know. Um, then you can actually do an actual comparison apples to apples to see how, you know, how your network is comparing to where you were three years ago. And then finally, I just put system support, you know, we're here to help with capital planning needs, managing G I S data, running reports. Just, just up the upkeep of the system itself, so. That was it for our end, but you know, if there's any other discussion or questions, we're happy to.
Do any towns ever set a goal, say we're at seventy now on average, right? Get reassessed in three or four years. I'd be curious if we. Yeah, I want a seventy-five or higher. Be at the median, you know what I mean? Something like that.
Yeah, no, we would say, you know, we've definitely had that before. We've had towns say it's a seventy, seventy-two and they want to get to a seventy. Yeah, no, we would say, you know, we've definitely had that before. We've had town say it's a seventy, seventy-two and they wanna get to a seventy-five, so.
I'm not sure that's the most effective way of doing it, but it'd be curious to, um. Understand what that would be. Another, another way you could allocate your.
Yeah, you can, you can actually do spreadsheets and show that, right?
Yeah, we can do like, I've done like spreadsheets before where it shows, you know, if you do X line zeros in this year, this year, this year, you'll get to a seventy-five and. Whatever, three to five.
I'm, I'm not actually as concerned with the seventy-five, but I would say this road, this road, this road from a capital plan perspective is what I would expect to see.
But we can actually like, we can actually like kind of forecast it out and say, you, you should be in this, you know, you should gain two points in three years if we do. These roads in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, so on. Yeah, those are all things we can.
Did you have a chance to look at the study, the old study that was posted on our uh website? Did John give that to you or talk to you about that or?
Yeah, I know you talked to that, I kind of.
But you're seeing it for three or four years that it's almost.
I wouldn't say it's useless, but it's just, it's just the data at that point. We just recommend getting, especially now with automated at the imagery. Uh, you know, the images aren't good after four, three or four years. And I, I mean, I, I always recommend after three or four winter cycles. You know, you probably wanna get an updated scan to see how, how those were degraded over time, especially the roads you haven't addressed.
Case to your point about a baseline, it's the twenty fifteen study where a baseline, do you think the scoring methodology? Is similar enough to use that as a under, you know, road, road comparison. This, I mean, it's hard copy. I'm probably gonna go look at it now that you mentioned, say, I wonder what Big Mel looks like.
I'm assuming that was a manual assessment. So if it was. If it was manual based, I mean, it would be subject to that inspectors interpretation of the roads at that time. So when you have manual versus automated, there's that, there can be some discrepancies on how, you know, how I say, say how I score a road versus how.
So don't spend a lot of time doing it, is what you're telling me?
And if you had two inspectors, yeah, I'm gonna look at it one way, you may look at it.
No, no, understood. And so that's my question is, is the methodology.
I mean, it's, it's on the same, it's the same scale, same zero, it should be the same zero to one hundred scale. Um, it's just two different ways of capturing the data. So. And you're also, you know, you're comparing some from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, so it's.
It'd be more curiosity than anything else.
I'm not saying it's irrelevant, the data from eight years ago, but it just, it gets, it just also that gap in time.
Let's work with the new stuff. That's what I said. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, this is very exciting. I know every town's like, wow, it's pavement management studies, so exciting.
So where do we go from here?
So the next steps would then be, you know, now it's the capital planning phase. So then we'd wanna use the data to. You know, I'd say generally, at least a three-year plan is probably good, but we have communities that wanna build out five years. Sometimes it gets built five years because in the event you have more funding or if your bid numbers coming lower and you can. Now you have two years of balance that you can kind of pull from in a plan. Hey, I can move this, these three roads up a year or so. And then obviously that certainly helps with the scoring, but it kinda gives you that. The plan is already established and it kinda helps you.
So have you, have you come up with estimates with what you've provided with us here of what it will take? Or do you, have you not done that step or is that what you want us to vote?
That's what, that's kinda where the next step would be to, um, you know, work Jonathan, the town on, on, you know. Putting the other plan, working with budget numbers and understanding what treatments you'd wanna.
So the question is for, for you to go back and look at it and make some recommendations to us about what. What's the most exigent, what we need to do and can they'll come up with a cost to do that?
Do we need from a budget standpoint, Mike, do we need to think about? A financial approach to give some guardrails for John to be able to assess what the best approach would be? Right? I mean, right now, the only thing you have is chapter nine, right? So that's, that's that bottom line.
We, we do this year, we do have the, we do have the additional one money just because if you look at. Right, right. And so this is a, an opportune time to do that, because.
No, no, and, and we've talked about ARPA too. I wanna talk about tonight too, cause I think it makes sense to kinda. Start the discussion about how do we allocate that since we need to do it in this calendar year and, you know. Yeah, but I think if we give John an idea of what the, the FY twenty-five dollars look like. That would probably give some guidance as to where to go. And also, you know, from my perspective, it's like. Is there a best practice given that dollar amount for longer term growth where funding it down the road may be um fluctuating? If you will. So would you say go preventative, try to go, you know. Borrow money project for these big roads, I focus this, these known funds here. That's the type of, I'd be one to understand.
Generally, like I recommend, I definitely recommend a balanced approach. So I always recommend definitely doing some preventative, kind of start there with the high roads score, very high cost benefit value. And then try to pick off some of the ones at the bottom of the curve at the same time. That's generally my recommendation.
And they, they have, uh, there's a lot of communities now that are borrowing. And doing a bond for whether it be one year or multi-years to get caught up. Uh, to where they should be.
And in the, to make the case for the bond, we'd wanna, I would wanna see. Approach if you take, you rehab all the crappy roads with that longer term.
Yeah, if you bond, then I do recommend to you.
Based on your scoring numbers, wh- what, which rows, at what point do you say that this needs to be reconstructed now? Is it, is it something that's at a fifty or something that's a thirty?
Fifty is our kind of, yeah, zero to fifty is the major rehab band we run on the program. Uh, so that's kind of restarted our permissions. However, like we have communities that will, we drop that number to like zero to forty if they prefer to do more of Millenfeld.
Gotta be based on, on what you have versus how bad the roads are, right?
And is there a safety aspect to that? And when you say zero to fifty, that's half your scale is major rehab, but is there? Zero to twenty, you've got significant safety issues that you need to address. I think that's sort of what we're going after, right?
Yeah, so I would definitely, that's, I, that's where I say it's a blend. I usually, we recommend like you usually use that worst to first and I start like the first five roads. That are at the bottom of that list, get those in the plan and then also trying to get, get roads in the middle as well.
I guess to, to, just to go further, we, we, we talked to the town administrator to, you know, to go all of the different departments about. You know, what your level of services budget look like, which is what we asked him to do. And I think for, this is a little bit more intensive, but for John is to. Look at this and before we give him any kind of parameters, he's gonna come back and crunch this data and come back and give us.
I would say too, I mean, what John's doing here is. His, this is his inventory assessment if you think about the capital. Everybody's supposed to have this to you next week along with the, the budget. So this is your, aside from your equipment, this is your inventory assessment. So. To me, it's, it's right in part of the capital plan process. Yeah, the, the, the safety thing that would be a big thing to consider when you, the zero to fifty seems like a big bucket to me. And, and I guarantee you, the more, up to all three of you, you come up with different scenarios. I guarantee you'll have more questions, more scenarios. It's, it's just.
Well, I think a lot of it depends on exactly, you know, when you say that the, the averages is, is a little bit below average in seventy. But out of those, you know, how many miles of road is below a thirty? You know, which is gonna dictate exactly what the balance.
There's only two roads, Wood Drive and Inman.
Wood Drive.
Did you know someone on Wood Drive? But Inman's a fourteen, I mean.
There is uh, below a thirty, you have ten roads.
Oh, there's ten?
There's ten. There's a page in there that shows them.
We're gonna look at it.
When you go into section uh two. And you go into the.
Second report. That looks several of end to.
I didn't realize they weren't sorted on the one I was like.
Can you say a little bit about what the scale is for the cost benefit value? I don't know how to, in this report.
Which one are you, are you on the?
No, I'm in the. Cost benefit value analysis. Curious like what that scale.
Yeah, so it's a federal equation. So what it does is, um. It takes a look at, I can send the equation if you like, but basically what it takes into account is the score of the road. Uh, it considers the unit price um of the improvement. Um, and so this is where we have the traffic count number in there as well. Um, so if you have actual traffic counts, get more accurate CBVs. It's kinda hard to explain without the equation, but I can, I can. Equation and.
Right, higher number is.
Higher number, more benefit. Yeah, yeah. So, so roads of higher traffic counts.
Seems like they're a pretty big scale even on this first page sorted by.
Yeah, and that's be, and the, the main reason why is because those first six roads or so are arterials and collectors. And so we're carrying a much higher. Number in our program, you know, except arterials, we're carrying ten thousand trips per day versus a local, we're carrying, I think, five hundred. So that generates in the equation a much higher CBV score. Um, and also those roads at the top, they're also falling in preventative maintenance band. Um, so that's implying is that these roads in their current state cost less to do some sort of improvement on. And so that's why the cost benefit value is higher. So if you look at the end of the report, you should see all like cul-de-sacs, like in the major, in the major band.
You shouldn't give us the hard copy initially. I'll be looking at that for a while.
Very useful data.
I guess, question just regarding the. Jody, do you want our current, how much ARPA funds are available? That have not been allocated, cause I know we, we got a truck out of it approximately.
Like nine. Because it's, it was, it was, started with one point eight, about eight of it was for the fire truck. And then the only other thing encountered so far was just the truck for highway, which is about. Yeah, so it's, so it's about.
Eight nine hundred? I mean, I'd like to throw it out there. I mean, and I've said this before, but I wanna, I recommend we use a good chunk of that to get a head start on this. And I think there's two projects I would probably recommend using those funds for. One is this, just to get a jump on the roads, but the other would be the senior center. Help the freight costs over there. And I know. If you need to side that, but I'd kinda wanna throw that out for people to think.
I, 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 I think it's premature to make that vote because I think the other things we need to look at are, you know, wha- what, what do we currently have? For, for debt, where is it, you know, and what point are we at? Cause I know we had some that's about to fall off or, or did fall off.
I mean, we got a pretty good idea with that, and I think you're gonna see the debt fall off for the next four years. It actually gets down to. Probably about hundreds, five years, I think, is what I saw. It drops off almost completely, but we're gonna have debt coming on from the schools. For the senior center. But that's why I'm just, I'm just like from a planning perspective and we can maybe put this in the next agenda is. I would actually like to talk about how are we gonna allocate our funds because if we can say. Five hundred to highway and four hundred to the senior center allows both parties to think about how they can think about funding. On their own various projects, that's all.
And I, and I agree with that. Um, but again, the first step is like you said, this next week, everybody's gonna have their numbers in. And we can start mixing it all into that, to that mix, into the discussion. After all of the different departments, we end with, you know, what their costs are. Cause we've got contracts coming up, but, but you're right, ARPA is, is one-time money.
Right, or, yeah, so we can't use it for a lot of that stuff that's coming at us. Operational budgets out. Projects are in. You should be supporting on this, John. Come on. Thousand towards highway for roads, I support them.
No, to highway, you know, I would say you've got other needs too, is my guess. Jody, you had a comment or a question or?
Yeah, I was just saying that, um, based on what these gentlemen said about this, this being a big component in the capital improvement plan. Um, I support that percent. That's a critical part of the bigger picture townwide. So I think, you know, as we learn more about um the prioritization about the roads in town. Leveraging chapter ninety as the first line source of fund, budget, operational. And then looking to um other sources of funds down the line, whether it be ARPA, whether it be um. Other sources, capital stabilization, a- anything that makes sense based on the project we're doing. But I think that this, this is just one of the needs across the town as it relates to capital improvement. So I think over as we learn about those requests that are coming in. Um, in the next couple of weeks, I think we'll have a better picture and sort of fold this in and line this up with some of the other requests. And if there's a desire by the board to vote on a certain dollar amount to sort of get a jump start on some of the bigger issues. Then I think that that makes sense at that time. Um, but we can certainly work together, John and I, to say, okay, talk to me about. What your findings are and let's start to pull these numbers and actually put them into the plan. Because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to say, all right, here's our six things to choose from. How do we wanna do what and then what fiscal year? Um, so I have all that data, John, that we can sit down if you want and um take your numbers and start to plug it in the, the bigger plan. And I think that'll give the board um a, a full view of all the needs across the.
Many is could be doing that. Yeah, well, I, I, I think the first thing to look at is that typically the chapter ninety money, which is, you know, gets refilled, that bucket gets refilled every year. Right? The idea is that money is to maintain the roads. You know, so that, to do the maintenance piece, but there's a certain amount of uh reconstruction, you know, complete rehab that, that. Maybe I, I, and I don't have any idea what the mix would be, but to your point about looking at some kind of a, a, a debt exclusion or, or. Borrowing money to do it, you know, we need to figure out exactly what, what, which roads. Need to be reconstructed versus which ones need the maintenance. And that's how we get to that number and, and how. How ARPA would fit into that and is that the best use of it, which I think it probably is. But that, that's what, that's what needs to happen next.
I, I think the one thing I would say, I mean, I agree with everything I'm hearing, but I also think that the capital plan, I mean, to get that. Fully up and running compared to the needs that some of these projects have sooner, we gotta be very careful of timing. Because people are, I'm gonna be, need to be ready for May and they need to be ready for May by March, right?
And there's also spending limitations timeframe wise, um, ARPA funds need to be spent by a certain. Time period, so that's a consideration as well.
We, but we've got, that's well into the next fiscal year. Have the inventory assessments come, been coming in?
Um, but the, I can see the department requests have been coming in, like the budget requests.
They're putting their, their information into.
Supporting it.
Yeah, in terms of the asset plant, yeah. And there's still leases out there, there's a whole.
Highway is the, one of the biggest uh words in the word cloud, so good job. And dump truck, right, dump truck, highway. Public library is up there though, and so is parks and fire. Anything else?
More to capital planning than this topic, but so it's probably, we need to take up next time. That's the working group concept. If you agree on that. Alright, thank you very much.
Great information.
Have a good night. Next question, John, um, can you give us a quick update on Providence Road? Integrated from the inside.
One that's still open, part of the issue was that. A part above water separated from the part under. Pretty of the water took it and pulled it up inside the site.
I see.
So half of that pipe was blocked.
And that's why the water went over around on the side, cause it couldn't go through.
And then the other one, it's supposed to be a four by four pavement, it's collapsed down to one by one. And we've tried to open it back up, but it's just everything is collapsing.
They need to be rebuilt, and I can tell you right now that since that happened, I've started looking at other commerce in town, and we're having the same issue in other places.
And the D O T engineer told you that that it was structurally adequate, that you could just backfill it and pave it for the winter.
Today it's scheduled to be paved tomorrow morning. Four thirty five Friday morning, we will have both lanes open travel. During this snow this weekend, as it takes, it's going to warm up next week. For that. Well, I'm just saying, if we get a lot of snow and then we see things warm up next week, if there's any thaw.
It's going to be in the fifties next week.
So if we get a melt. For a couple of days, but there's, I think, two other storms coming down the pipe, cell storms.
Right.
I don't, I think that we have it pretty well open right now. So as long as we stay on top of it and keep stuff cleared out of there. We should be fine as long as we don't get another six inch rainstorm in a day.
All right, how about um how about the hot box and the and the M V A and?
I'm still waiting to hear back in that more than I both, we've discussed it earlier. She'd reached out to the insurance company because we haven't heard anything regarding the truck. On. But they, it's a total, this is not, we all know that. I had a conversation with him. I have a good suspicion it's going to be, but I don't have anything that says that.
Did you get the a subject matter expert to talk about the hot box condition of it and if it was damaged in the crash or?
Did the presentation to you guys and showed the buckling inside the hot box is significantly worse now after the accident. And when he looked at it today, he goes, this isn't usable. You cannot, I mean, the floor is is really caved up now. And he said the ceramics probably damaged underneath.
The discussion discussion we had had um after the the uh. The appraiser for the company came out to look at the truck and look at the at the hot box. His first thing was that I'm not qualified to comment on this. And then the second comment, second thing he said was, but I can't say that this happened. But if you're not qualified, then you can't comment that, which is why he got an expert to look at it. So now we've got to go to to the other insurance company for the asphalt party and the.
He's going, that expert has been sending me an email with his findings, what he saw in that unit today. Or when he saw it today, he's going to send me now with the information so that we can forward it along to the insurance company.
Great.
In the meantime, I have, uh, we got a rental unit today so that we can follow the puddles that are getting worse. Like a truck and a box or. Trailer. Just a trailer car. It's at the cost of three thousand dollars a month. I think we're paid by insurance.
Should be.
Should be.
Any chance it's one of the proposed models like you were using? Get some spare hands on it. We've had that discussion.
We have, and then I went to the other part of it where this company offered. Said we can bring out a new unit to you guys. Uh, it would be a three ton unit completely stripped down, which is what we were looking for. And he said. Three thousand dollar rent every month would go towards the cost of the machine if we commit to buying from it.
And the discussion for that needs to be held with the insurance company with with Maya. They would have to be the ones to say that this is acceptable or not.
Okay.
So we've already.
That sounds good.
Good job. Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else?
That's it. Not today.
I think um John Erickson is on.
Yes, I yes, I am.
All right, we just wanted to to specifically um. To know about the the status of the uh. Of that freestanding structure, the shed behind the library. Because there is a my my understanding is there is a a historical commission meeting tomorrow night. And, you know, they're concerned about condition of it and, you know, next steps. And I'd like to know your professional opinion um of where of what needs to be done and and when it needs to be done. And how long before we can take some action and what needs to be done to safeguard it?
Um, so I think it really, it should be, it should be torn down almost immediately. Um, it's just incomplete disrepair. Um, and I kind of outlined that in a memo or a letter a few weeks ago. There's just just nothing near that seems salvageable to me. Um, and I did put in my letter, you know, anything can be repaired, but it's probably more costly to repair it and restore it than to just replace it. If that's, you know, if if there was an appetite for using that building. And I don't think historically that there's any features there that can be replicated with today's materials.
Okay, and. Brendan, I know you had you'd looked at the bylaw and the demolition bylaw and the and the edits. So you just pointed it out. I think it's on this document that Laura has included. How did the how did the bylaw change?
Uh, okay, I mean, we do have a member online, but my summary and correctness and wrong. Previously, it was age based for twenty twenty two. And then after twenty two, twenty twenty two, uh, it was voted to go to a inventory based system. So uh, there's a an inventory list of uh historical properties in town as well as any of them on the national register. Local historic district or or local register. So that's my understanding. This is an interesting case in in that it is um potentially, you know, has some history, but it um. May not have made it onto the list because it was renovated. So the the date of renovation shows on the assessors is twenty sixteen.
But but this this structure wasn't renovated. It was the the church that turned into a library that was renovated, right?
Yeah, 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 correct. So um, the original list, the historic um inventory list, my understanding is that as a first pass. Uh, it's using the assessors database as a date of construction for all the parcels in town that are over a certain age. Uh, and this particular parcel, even though that part of it is older than than the cutoff date. Uh, the data of um on the assessors in inventory is twenty sixteen because the main parcel was reconstructed. So there's a chance that it was left off unintentionally. So that's just my understanding.
So it's inventory based, but the inventory is based on age.
At this point.
Right. And so it got missed on its initial assessment of old structures.
And and I I'm not fully qualified to speak on.
So is there is there anybody from the historical commission that's actually on the call on the meeting right now?
Yeah, Chairman Maroli, I'm I'm on the call, Kathy Schofield.
Great, Kathy, can you can you just just tell us what the? E- even beyond the bylaw, just the historical value of the building and and what what you think we should? What the issues are we need to be aware of? I think you're muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, it was, uh, the structure is part of the original Usher bungalow, which was built in nineteen ten. And it housed a famous performing group that was amended every year for um Nittmuck Lake Park. Obviously, uh, the original structure is gone. It burned. And that carriage house or shed is uh what still stands on the original property. And the church, you know, was obviously built on the property. Um, we hadn't quite discussed it. Um, and it definitely, like Brendan said, it was overlooked.
So I guess do you in in your assessment, how does the? How does the bylaw, the demolition delay bylaw tie into this structure? Does it tie into this structure? Um, or is it now based on the last vote at town meeting? Is it not included in that uh under the under the jurisdiction of that by law?
Um, you know, we could stick to just the specific language in the bylaw. But we also have other contributing um factors that come into play. One is the North Ave Historic District, um, which was established by the state in nineteen eighty nine.
Is that part? Is that within the district? I think the district is be is is not, that's not part of the district, though, right?
It's not part of our uh Center Village District. It is part of the North Ave Rural Historic District.
Okay.
Which was.
So it is part of the, so it is part of a historic district.
It is, it is. It's an honorary designation. Um, but it's the basis for preservation of the North Ave. Um, properties. Um, we at some point would like to include North Avenue as a historic district. But that's, you know, it's going to be some work involved. So we haven't gotten there yet. So I mean, in terms of, does it have historic value? It it does as a remaining structure from, you know, what was once a very big part of Mendon's history in the Usher troop that used to come out. Um, and there's a a bungalow on Washington Street that reflects the same um structure that was originally in place of the St. Michael's. Um, I mean, we would like to speak to the library personnel and see, you know, if we can come up with a solution. Um, and just iron out any of the details before we make a decision. But I I mean, you know, I think I explained that we've been low on attendance and um staffing for the commission. So we haven't been able to get around to setting up a meeting, but that will take place on Thursday.
Okay, so tomorrow. But but again, just I just want to go back to the building inspector. I I know I I think since the last time we discussed it, you went out and evaluated the building. And not to sound like a broken record, but I I think what you're telling us is it's not safe. Is that correct?
That that's completely correct. It's um, I mean, I went out there, I inspected, I took some photos. There's there's holes in the roof. Um, the walls are buckling in some locations, the wooden ceiling that was in there. Um, it's complete, well, at least half of it's already fallen down. Um, the doors are not really functional. Um, I just don't see what you would save if you wanted to, but um, and I do, I I consider this unsafe. And normally I would tell a property owner that it's unsafe. It needs to be repaired or or demolished. And if they didn't comply, then I would, you know, I would go through the proper legal action to get something done. But in this case, the town's a property owner, so I'm just going, you know, of course, going to defer to your board on how they want to move forward, but I.
But it's it's your call to condemn the building. Is that correct?
Yes, I've already deemed it unsafe within the context of mass general law, so it'll be.
So it's already.
Obligated to make it safe.
So we're obligated to make it safe by either repairing it or tear it down?
Yes.
Is there a timeframe associated with either of those actions?
Well, there is. It's it's under the law. It's supposed to be done within, if it's not done within. A day or two, I don't, I can look it up, but then again, in a normal situation, the town has the right to come in and make it safe. Under their own pop, their own power and has recourse for recapturing the funds that they spend.
Right.
You know, this was owned by a private.
So.
Resident.
John, just a question. If if it's a day or two to make it safe. I would assume then there's mitigating steps that could be taken to while it's being made safe, fencing it off, blocking it off, blocking access while repairs were made. Is that fair?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, uh, so and and from a bylaw perspective. I mean, Kathy, I would think the the demolition bylaw uh delay or demolition delay bylaw. Is there to allow the historic commission to step in and say, hey, do we think this is worth, you know, saving, et cetera? Fair?
Yeah, you would like to think so. That is exactly.
But by the same token, Kathy, the historic commission could waive uh any action under that delay bylaw if you deem that you did not want to. Uh, take any action fair? You don't need to hold a hearing. You could defer a acting against that bylaw. Fair?
Yes, oftentimes we will have a meeting if we don't feel as though a hearing is required. So um, I again, we came into this situation late. We were informed. Um, actually, we weren't really technically informed, and I understand that, you know, it was not deemed to be historic. Um, but I, you know, this is about following the correct protocols.
No, understood. I think everybody's, everybody's trying to do that, Kathy, because it wasn't deemed historic because of oversight based on the what Brendan told us. So understand that, but you could have a meeting tomorrow and determine that you do not wish to delay the demolition. And if we were to put up any some sort of barriers, John, to kind of block access. That might give the commission twenty four hours to have their meeting and make a determination.
Yeah, that I I mean, I don't think anything imminent that's going to happen in twenty four hours. I mean, of course, there's no storm coming makes makes me a little nervous. Um, I can't feel that, you know, I can't say for sure the next uh big gust of wind is going to knock it over. But it's it's certainly no, it's certainly not safe the way it is. As far as protocol, there is an emergency demolition provision in the bylaw where if if something were. Unsafe and I I certainly would say this is unsafe. You know, the owner could apply for a building permit and I could grant it without it going to the bylaw. But um especially in this case, I think everybody wants to work together and do what's best for the town.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I also believe that in the bylaw, it also states that the commission should be included in that decision making in the conversation. So I I mean, I think that's important.
So you have a meeting tomorrow night? Have you got this on your agenda to talk about?
Yes, we do.
Great. So you'll, so I guess the two steps are we need to take steps to make it safe by coordinating it off. So no one can get access to it to get um. Nobody's hurt. And then you're going to have your meeting tomorrow night and report back to us.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Do do we want to put our board on notice for a one topic agenda, maybe next week, since we're not scheduled, just to kind of?
I think based on their, yeah, on their response on what she reports to us, I'll I'll call a meeting if if we need it, right? So how the question, the question, uh, John, Mr. Building Inspector, how do we make it safe for the next few days?
At a minimum, I would get somebody in there to at least close the doors completely and and either screw them shut or nail them shut. Or somehow fasten off so if people can't just walk in there um at a minimum.
I'm not sure we can close the doors, can we?
Well, I don't, I think not, not when you use them as a typical door, but you could, you could take them off the hinges, reposition them, screw them back in. You know, something so it's not a complete eyesore.
Um, can I ask why that wasn't done up until this point? Because I know you met with them a month and a half ago. I I'm just not sure. I don't under, I don't understand why. If it was that big a concern, why the doors weren't secured already?
Um, I mean, that's 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 not the only aspect that's unsafe. Um, but if you ask me what to do, that's what I would do as a as a minimum. I mean, as a liability, I wouldn't want. Want people walking in there.
I don't think we want a liability either. We just want a conversation. So, all right, well, I think we're good. Um, we'll talk tomorrow with the library staff and and we'll make a decision, figure out where to go next and go from there.
All right, John, can you can you arrange or do we need to uh, we need to find somebody to to coordinate off at this point, right? Because it hasn't been barricaded or anything else, right?
I I could help make the arrangements. I'm just not sure about the funding. Um, is that something you want me to just get a quote for?
Yeah.
Get it to the town administrator?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure I could have somebody get me a price tomorrow on it.
All right, boys, it's time.
Yeah, well.
You know what, guys? I could go down there and secure it. No problem. I could make the wood.
Send Richard.
Can I interject? Just a moment. This is Andrew over at the uh, the director of the Taff Library.
Sure.
So just I I wanted to field Kathy's question about why nothing happened with those doors. Uh, I can say from our perspective, we actually emptied that um that carriage house. Uh, would have been back in June, I believe. Uh, those doors are so warped, we couldn't get them closed again. Uh, and so I just wanted to add that in that it wasn't through lack of trying. We absolutely tried to, we didn't take them off the hinges, obviously. Um, but but certainly they're so warped that we couldn't get them to actually go in or to to pull them shut.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, John, if if you can talk with Jonathan and just. That's fine. There you go. All right. That's great. Anything else? I think that covers this this subject.
All right, Andrew, I'll see you tomorrow.
I will be there. Thanks Kathy.
Terrific, thanks Andrew.
Okay.
All right, John, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Um, thank you all.
Town Administrator Report.
The Record Room Project, um, I have spoken to Mike Petrovich, I think his name is, is currently, uh, working with the consonant aging on the expansion, and I have, uh, spoken to him about putting together the wrapper that we need. Basically, Armando did all of the specifications and the details drawings and things like that, and what I'm gonna do. I don't think, uh, I think the, the best course of action at this point would be to have, uh, Mike and Armando work together to put together the specification. I told them I want it done by mid-January, so that we could open the bids in mid, end of February with the construction start sometime April, May, June. So that's the plan, uh. You know, that, I thi- that's the only way it's gonna get done at this point. We, you know, we went through several different iterations of what Armando had proposed with multiple, like, literally fifteen, sixty changes to the document, and I still don't think that, uh, that if we submitted it, that we, I, I don't think you'd get any bids on it. So, you know, uh, Mike is a, you know, architect, uh, which Armando was not. He's a design engineer, so, uh, and he knows, you know, uh, Mike works day in and day out with RFPs, using AIA documents, and he does a lot of this historical work, so it's gonna be a cost to it. He gave me a price of ten thousand dollars. He's gonna go through the process of putting the spec together, following up in terms of the, the bid opening, going through the whole selection process as well as doing the, uh, basically the act clerk of the works as the construction is going on. The other thing I'd like to have him do, given how much money we have and whether we're, we're gonna have quite enough, is sort of stratify the proposals so that we have to keep one or just do a portion of one part of the project to save money that we're, we're gonna be able to do that.
And this is historical renovation, right?
Yes.
So, is the, is Mike's cost covered under the money that's already appropriated from CPA, or do we need to bring that back and possibly?
I, 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 I just used, I, I was looking at as being part of that, the whole ramp-up process. And I, you know, once again, usually an architect is ten percent of the project, which is, you know, if Armando was five or six thousand and Mike is ten, we're, we're, we're there, you know? So, that's where we're at. Uh, DPW, uh, for the water, I sent the email, uh, we're still working on that. Uh, we had.
Friday, Friday. What, what's? Some Friday, some Friday.
Yeah, they, they actually were gonna come down the day of that storm that we had, and they had to postpone it, so they came the next day, and they, we're closing in on it eventually, yeah, hopefully in the next few weeks. Asset inventory, uh, we have approximately forty-five, fifty assets that are currently classified. We have several departments that are out there that still haven't provided us with the data, including myself. Uh, cause I had, I wanted to talk about building values for the AMX and for the town hall with the, uh, uh, the gene, the, the assessor, so I have that information now. Department head meeting on one eighteen twenty-four, we're gonna talk about the budget, uh, look at, uh, talk about the asset, uh, management, uh, up, the, the results of the asset management inventory, uh, maybe talk a little bit about, um, uh, the whole thing with the crash and how that might be worked into the budget for the next coming year. Um, in the capital plan in terms of, you know, getting those swarms out, getting people working on that. There was a lo- a little bit of confusion between the asset inventory being the capital plan, and that is, wasn't the intent of the, the asset inventory. It's just to get a, a complete list of all the assets that we have that have a, a life of about five years and, and a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. I think we should have maybe gone a little bit lower on the total cost, maybe added it fifteen, but that's a.
It tells you where everybody's at and their thinking, right?
Yeah.
They presume that, that's because we've related it one-to-one over the years and.
Yeah.
We've sort of gotten in that habit, we just need to break out of it.
Yeah, like I said, I think it's a little too high. I think there, you know, fifteen thousand, I think, would, would have been a better number in retrospect, but.
But, so, so in the end, though, when you think about it, if you think about the capital plan has this threshold, they still have a need that's below that threshold, I'm assuming that's coming through their budget asks.
I'm sorry?
In terms of capital planning, meaning, in the end, you've got the inventory.
Yeah.
This is what we have.
Yeah.
And you got capital planning, which is, what are your big-ticket items you need, you want?
In, in the.
And if the threshold's up here, I'm assuming their budget asks are gonna cover anything below that threshold. We should still see a full picture of the asks.
Yeah.
I think the asks are really the thing right now that we need to get in front of.
Well, one, one will be a capital item, the other will be out of your.
Yeah, but you, you. Understood, but to me, it's like, what are the asks?
And, yeah, I think that, well, we're not gonna get that until we get the capital planning forms out and set that process. And I, 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 I don't know, did I have it on the, I wasn't here for the last meeting, cause I had my Cataract surgery.
You have asks built into your asset inventory form, I sent you that email?
Yeah, yeah, we do have that, but I, I think that you still have to send out forms so that we can,
Yeah, we.
The capital planning committee can actually.
Right, or, or maybe capital planning working group, since we don't have a committee.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think that's a critical piece of this.
Right, and the, and the answer is, since we don't have a committee, we have to put together a working group, which is, right, yeah.
All right, just tell me who those people are, we can get, you know, in fact, uh, we've talked about specifically, uh, uh, you know, certain, using certain forms that were on the state, the DLS, uh, they have the budget forms, that, uh, not budget forms, capital forms, and you said you had, uh, were gonna use, we were gonna potentially use those.
Oh, as far as the compilation of everything?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
So, you know, we, 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 we're right there, all we gotta do is, you know.
And we had informal discussion in our, one of our last meetings about what the working group could be comprised of.
All right, yeah, I wasn't here for that, that's fine. You know, I didn't know where we were going with it, so.
Um, basically, it's a, it's, it's a, a working group of, you know, the, the different department heads and the different people in the departments that can, that can meet with you and get together with.
All right, that's fine, they could do that.
Yeah. Well, I, I think we talked about a couple select board, a couple FinCom. Right.
Yeah.
The CPA. Then less. But the first.
Large.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So we get a priority list together, and then we gotta decide specifically, have we two wanna budget towards that? On an annual basis, so that we can look at, you know, what we have and what are the priorities and, you know, are there other things that, you know, other ways to, to afford to take care of some of those issues? Uh, lower conference room, we have the TVL setup, which is awesome. Um, I know that Lonnie's gonna be putting together some kind of a, a manual or guidelines so the people can operate the system. Um, we have a meeting, uh, I got contacted by Kevin Curros from Mass Office of Business Development. Um, I wanted him to come into a meeting, but he, he is, can't do it because of the scheduling this month. But what I suggested we do, and at least initially is myself and Mike, talk to him about potential economic development projects we might have in the community and whether there are funding resources that we could use to, you know, address some of those concerns and needs. I also talked to, uh, Dan Scott today regarding the summary for the water project, uh, the, the parcel off Profits Road, so that we could begin discussions with the Congressman's Office about, uh, you know, how do we go about looking at potential funding sources for that? And, and I sort of, I've been pressuring him to get that done, he said he's gonna have it done by midweek next week. So, you know, the Congressman's Office will get a, sort of an executive summary of what's happened up to this point, you know, some, you know, statistical data on the results that we've gotten from that parcel of land and, and, and what types of funding opportunities are that we can use to, to get some money. Uh, we, I met today with, uh, Jody, um, Eric, uh, Sean and myself to talk about the revenue projection, which we're gonna have at the next meeting. And as was mentioned earlier, we already have the school, not schools, spring, that's something different. Um, uh, I'm drawing a blank on the, the accounting stuff, but, Spring, Springbrook, Springbrook, yes. Um, to, uh, we have people already beginning to put the information in. I believe there's another week, it closes next week, so we'll have period where we can just take a look at all the data and, and then, uh, you know, uh, figure out the process in terms of whether, I, I generally would sit down with the finance director or the accountant and meet with each of the individual departments. I don't know if that's something that you want me to do, or whether you prefer to have those department heads come in and make a presentation to the board and myself, or how do you?
Typically, typically, the, 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 the town administrator would handle that, and then, and then we would, we would pick and choose which departments we were gonna have come in. Yeah, so that's the first step, is for that. Jody?
Yeah, I was gonna say too, David, and the memo that we had sent, um, to everyone.
We didn't assign departments and dates and stuff.
Yeah, so by Friday, so there's.
Oh, cool.
We didn't watch the memo, there's a preliminary calendar about when some of these budgeting tasks are gonna be taking place. Um, and I believe you guys all received the copy as well, so the, the next target dates are Friday to be able to set up, um, working sessions with each department, um, to schedule a review of what they're, what they input to their department requests with David and I. We can kind of flush them out, ask questions, anything from account structure to, um, any questions that they might have justification around, you know, asks and that sort of thing, to make sure that they're prepared before they come in front of the board to talk.
We don't want like line items that people have made a request for, for a thousand dollars and haven't used in six years. We wanna sort of weed out some of that kind of thing. And if they're making requests in, in excess of what they would normally request for an individual line item, we, we want the rationale and, and, you know, to find out specifically why the need is there and, and why it's justified.
Have you had any feedback about how they've been working with Springbrook this year? Cause this is the first time that they're.
Right now, they're putting everything into Excel, into a spreadsheet, and then that always.
That was Spring, I thought that was Springbrook.
No.
That was, that's how it was supposed to be actually two years ago, when we.
I was in the question, we.
Yes.
Today.
Yes, well, we looked at, I don't know what we looked at it for, but you were logging into that today, for sure. Um, but the department requests are, um, they're using something on SharePoint.
Oh, all right.
Now, can I ask why, cause we made that conversion two years ago. It was recommended to us to do that. Why are we not using the software? Because it was supposed to save a lot of time.
Yeah, we, we are using the software for, for the budget. The departments are not filling it into the budget because there has been no training, um, for department heads to do that.
Okay, is there, well, that, when we purchased it, part of it was trained, it was supposed to be available. So. Can we just do all that new, that account mapping to the state accounts like just last spring? Can we just finish that up? So, I mean, I think this.
That was all I'll take here.
We'll, we'll break the year out from conversion, um, in July of last year is when we started the new AP, um, process. So we, we flushed out a lot of things this past year. It's just one of the, the things still on the to-do list with the budget season, and it came up very quickly, and, and there was no training plan around getting the department heads up to speed on inputting their data directly into.
Well, if, if someone could reach out to Springbrook, just remind them that they were gonna provide training so they could work with the department, so everybody will know. Cause the whole idea of it was to not burden the town administrator you were doing that, was to give them the, the tools to, to make it easier. You, you mentioned you, you're gonna have a call with the, uh, either legislature's office.
Well, Kevin, Kevin Curros is a, he was a legislator, he works for the, for the governor, he's, he was a state rep.
No, he's the director for Boston.
Yeah.
For Mass Office.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you and I talked about this, trying to coordinate our engagement with our reps, whether it be state, local, federal, on a, on a regular basis, so we can consolidate our, our asks and get it in front of them. Sort of a, so just, I meant, you weren't here when we talked about it, so.
Yeah.
If we have that.
We did discuss it, but it's, but Kevin, Kevin has, has made itself available next week.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll have.
This is one of those things like.
And then he's, right, I wanted him to basically come in.
Yeah.
To, 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 uh, remote offices, teams that, you know, and talk to the board about some of the, uh, uh, things that are available from the state, they do a lot of TIFs and things like that.
Some of our committees are looking to engage them directly, and it seems like we can kind of get a cognitive scale, keep our agenda in front of them.
Hmm, all right. Um, tomorrow, there's a meeting, teams meeting with DOT on Maple Street, the one-way. I don't know, I, I know certain people had been invited that had participated in the.
I'd be curious to sit in if you can forward it to me, listen in.
I think, didn't we all, didn't you forward it to the whole board? No?
I forwarded it to the people, she originally just wanted DOT, fire, police, myself in the chair, and that.
I don't need to sit in then, that's cool. I, I'm available, but if it's, I think it's.
Oh, yeah, I was on that too.
Right. And that came out of the.
It was originally supposed to be the day of that storm that.
Originally.
And they canceled it.
Any elected, and then it was like, well, it was give us a heads up.
And, um, Joyce Goodmore, so, so I'm gonna be part of that discussion, so. That's it.
All right, so thank you, all right. Any other questions for the town administrator? All right, we need to, uh, go into executive session, I moved to enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General law thirty-eight, section twenty-one eight-two, purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim town administrator. So we're, no. All right, roll call vote, Marali, aye?
No, side.
God, would I?
Buder, aye?
General, aye.
And we will, uh, we will come back into general session, just to, to take a vote. So.
Okay.
Um, you can if you want, sure. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to figure out how to lock it down.